I'm gonna go ahead and call this special Assembly meeting of the Committee on Homelessness to order. Let's go ahead and start off with introductions, starting with Mr. Willington going down.
Introduce me. Don Willington.
Stephanie Rhodes, Jeff.
I'm Russ Webb. I'm just the Citizens South Edition.
Felix Rivera.
I'm Peter.
Christopher Coniston.
Pete Peterson.
Hi, Austin Peterson.
Deputy Mayor Peterson, municipal attorney.
D. James Simpson.
Alright, so for the folks at the table, I'm gonna do my best to share this mic, go back and forth, I think it's important for us to make sure that the audience can hear us and that we're also on the record clearly that we speak into the mics whenever we do. Thank you to the community members, city staff, and my colleagues for joining us this evening for the second, this second meeting to continue reviewing the 12 policy suggestions brought forward by community members. I'm gonna do a quick debrief of the last meeting held in September and talk about the process for this meeting. At the first meeting on these 12 points, we reviewed Points 1, 2, 5, 10, 12, 3, and 4, in that order. We reviewed these first as we believed they were the ones which we had the greatest alignment and were not primarily resource questions. The points we're discussing today have resource and legal implications. Assembly members and community members had questions on Points 1, 2, 3, 4, and 12. Specifically on Point 1, there were questions surrounding use of municipal code to deal with public health and safety issues. On Point 2, there were questions surrounding costs. On Point 3, Mr. Trainee asked legal to provide options to implement this particular policy. On Point 4, I asked for budget proposals to implement these points and any other missing pieces in our overall system. And on Point 12, I asked Parks and Recreation for an update and timeline regarding development of a comprehensive strategy and a plan to enhance volunteer efforts. After addressing the remaining points, which are 6, 7, 8, 9, and 11, that's what we're gonna start off with today, we'll go back to tackle these parking lot items. I intend to allocate at a minimum the last 30 minutes of our meeting for public comment. I ask everyone at the table to be brief and succinct in any comments and questions they have to allow this time. Before we dive in, I will repeat what was stated at the last meeting and at meetings in the past. I understand that this is an emotional subject and that for many of us in the room impacts our daily lives. I am happy to facilitate a debate on ideas, but a debate on personalities will not be a part of today's meeting. I ask that all comments made today, both by members of the Assembly, others on the committee, as well as the public, be both respectful and insightful. A tough thing to do on this subject, I know. Because of the design of this meeting, which is to create productive dialogue around specific policy objectives, discussion will be limited to the parties at the table and any relevant staff. As I've stated, I will be allowing public comments at the end of this meeting and ask for the audience's patience. Alright, let's go ahead and get started. So, the, I wanna put it into the record, I think we've been joined by Ms. France. Okay, so, starting with Point Number 6. This is to amend municipal code AMC15.20.020.b.15.c.II to more narrowly define personal property of illegal campers in accord with court guidance to exclude items which deter camp abatement, examples of generators, collections of propane tanks, etc. The administration, which, I should also say, the administration provided some updated responses from the last meeting in September, which everyone should have. But the administration's response to this particular point is that they suggest that we do not pursue, that the current list in code is drawn from case law, it cannot practically be further narrowed within the confines of governing law. Items to be cleared are not deterrents to camp abatement. Many large items are routinely cleared from the green spaces. So I'm gonna go ahead and start discussion on this particular point, going to legal. I think this is particularly square in their department, and then I will go to the Coalition.
Okay, um, can I have my camera here, or should I grab the microphone? I can grab the microphone. Okay, so I'm going to give you the person from the municipal attorney. And with respect to this, if anyone can see Gates, who actually is with the principal architect of our ordinance, so he can also speak to the list that is currently in municipal code. Our guidance is based on the fact that the case that governs many elements of what we can and can't do in our code, Angle, the municipality of Anchorage, in that case, the judge issued relatively specific guidance about what property is considered valuable and which must be stored if the municipality is clearing camps. And I think this concern arises from the fact that, a correct fact, which is that the case does not specifically state that generators are on that list of valuable property. It does specifically state a number of things, shelter, bedrolls, identification, photographs, memorabilia, etc. And so I think technically the code could be amended to remove generators. That said, the guidance in the case is also relatively broad, that any item that is stored in such a manner indicates an individual values it and seeks to preserve ownership of that item, it must be stored by the municipality. The case also speaks very strictly about items that are used as part of the shelter. And so I think the guidance to our teams actually doing camp abatement would remain the same, whether or not the code is abated. The code list is designed to help our teams do something, take constitutional action and remove and abate items that are permitted to remove and throw up disposable, and store items that they are required to store under governing case law. So again, I think we could take it out of code if we wanted to, but I think under the way that the case law is drafted, we would nonetheless be required, even if it wasn't written in code, our teams would still be bound by the same legal restriction and would be required to store those items, any generators that were used in heating, any kind of shelter. Certainly, if APD can demonstrate that generators have been stolen, that's a completely different story. Those items can be seized, those don't need to be stored, they're not deemed valuable personal property. But if we cannot demonstrate that something is a stolen item, we must treat it as valuable personal property of an individual and store it if required by the ordinance. And with that, I would ask the mayor if he wants to add, because again, he was, has a longer history of decisions than I do, was the principal architect of our code.
I would just add that this conversation about property, about this personal property, for purposes of the purpose of the case, in the past, I've been asked about this list, and I've stated that I can use it originally if it's drawn, what DC code, which was the code at the time when we drafted this after that, they can include in the court finding process and constitutional draft of ordinance. And to say here that, you know, the DC code has changed, or maybe it was wrong, but I think that DC code, software, mainly was part of policy, or like, it was, it's a lot of jurisdiction, that they say on the trial, committee litigation, and I'm entirely certain, that what I can tell is that we can have the opinion in court with the opinion that almost all the things on the list are referred to in the opinion. I had a PowerPoint prepared, like, to show this opinion to show that, you know, how that is set through, that they should, which could find it better, or, or view that, that is still this problem. What is it in that least possession, this is what Pearson just said, generators won't mention in the decision, or the jurisdictions that have, that has this to personal property, property takes on there, what is there that is the attachment of the vision, when property is organized, when it demonstrates personality, it's ownership. So, if you take, as this one person said, items on our court by this, that still applies. And that's, that's one aspect I wanted to ask, and say, where do we need to go?
Thank you, Ms. Pearson, thank you, Mr. Gates. I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Stephanie and Russ.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would defer to my legal brain trust, and I would say, I appreciate that you are not being allowed debates on personalities, I would lose that debate miserably, so...
So, first of all, every single jurisdiction has to look at this, these constitutional cases and the determinations based on what courts have said. No court is going to make a list for you, but it does seem clear that the other cases that interpret all of this besides Angle, talk about types of property that are protected because there are small, mobile shelters, carts, personal identification documents, family memorabilia, portable electronics, blankets. Another case, Cassie Hamilton, you know, if you look at the factual basis of the case, we're talking about property that was in public spaces that could fit into trash bags. Of course, we have our own case, the ACLU litigation, where some things were protected, but none of them were as large as generators. You know, the overarching problems, of course, of the municipality has allowed camps to become so large that you have items as large as generators, freezers, I've seen all kinds of things that are huge. The intention here is not to protect all property that a person could call home to a public space. The intention here is to protect the property of homeless individuals. Homeless individuals don't have a right to have a generator to essentially run their heating and their lights and all of the things that you would do with a home or recreational vehicle generator. They have a right to a sleep alternative if one is not available. And so those things that are the accoutrements to that, and not things that you would be operating your, you know, home from in an emergency, I think that there is a clear way to distinguish between those. And from my perspective, if the municipality doesn't have a problem storing large items, that's fine, but they're doing it at our expense. So we shouldn't really be storing items any more than we have to, or than is legally supportable by the law.
I would just say... Yeah. Can I get the mic quick? Sorry. So, I just wanna say that we shouldn't be having any clapping, or hooting, or hollering during this meeting, please. We have a very limited amount of time to discuss some pretty in-depth items, and I wanna make sure we have time for public comments at the end. Thank you.
As Stephanie referred to, I think the key is, in this effort, if we choose not to narrow the types of property that we have to store, then it comes at a cost, and it only makes it more imperative that we intervene and abate camps before the accumulation of these massive types of properties that cause us both difficulty in abating the camp, but also obvious additional potential expense in storing the property. So, if we're not gonna narrow the code, we'd better certainly move more quickly to abate the camps before they accumulate that kind of property.
Alright, thank you, Stephanie and Russ. I actually did have one question on the administration's response. They say near that items to be cleared are not deterrents to camp abatement. I don't know if Strado or Ms. Burke can speak to that.
I'll take a step at this. That was indicating that some very heavy items are removed, not only from homeless camps, but from locations around the community where the community members dump things or replace appliances, and there's a lot of things that are removed from lots of locations around the community, so that's what that's referring to.
Felix, can I comment just briefly?
Sure. The issue, however, is, and the code refers to, is not the removal of large pieces of property, it's what the municipality must store when abating a camp. Parks and Rec, and solid waste, and whomever can haul away items weighing literally tons, those are not the items that we should be forced to store when abating an illegal camp in our community.
Thank you, Ms. Burke, thank you, Russ. Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to make one additional caveat, which is, we have two separate sets of rights that we're dealing with here. One is the right to a sleeping space, and the other is the right to personal property, which is not to apply without any process of law. And we have many under analogous property regimes. If someone abandons an RV, a municipal property, we're not committed to throw it away instantaneously. We have processes and procedures where we have to retain that. We store vehicles routinely for relatively long periods of time before we're able to dispose of them, even if they're abandoned on municipal property. The same is true with property located by police, and courts of investigations of any size. So, this really certainly mirrors other property machines that we follow with respect to property, which is abandoned or lost on public land, and is our requirement, is our constitutional requirement, and not depriving people of valuable personal property without the opportunity for notice and the opportunity to return, to have that property returned to them. So it is, again, I think, not applicable relative to size, with respect to that property rate.
Mr. Coniston.
I think the thing that I have challenged to keep in perspective, and I would hope that my neighbors do as well, is at the heart of this question, it isn't how big is our property, or how quickly can we get all of this trash out of our parks, but the fact that we have a set of people, that we have a duty and a responsibility to figure out where are they going safely, at the same time, we're preparing to protect our neighborhoods. And so we are needing to balance the human interest in the middle of all of this problem. And so as grand as all of our feelings are, and the rage that we have against these problems, houses being raided, and all of the troubles that we see, there are human beings that we have to address as human beings in the middle of it. So I just wanna add that, to keep in perspective what we're dealing with. And any solution that we come to, any of these 12 points, or any other 12 points that might come up in the future, at the center of this, it's we have human beings, and we have to address them humanely.
Thank you, Mr. Coniston, for that reminder.
Could I just say one other thing, and I'm sorry to slow you down on this, but, you know, with your respect, I don't think the community brought up anything about not having compassion for those people who, you know, are living in parks. This is really a question of their rights, they don't have rights beyond a certain point, and the community has rights. So, the truth of the matter is that, you know, dogs, for example, in the States, there are states who think that, you know, not storing dogs, for example, is perfectly in alignment with the constitutional requirements of the law. Now, you know, a person also has a property interest in a dog. These cases are not, that are not to protect every kind of property interest that anyone has. They are very distinctly related to people who are camping on public property and who do not have the privilege of homes.
Thank you, Stephanie. Any other comments from my colleagues? Okay, so, I will just say that, from my perspective as Chair of the Committee, I do not believe I will be pursuing this particular point, but do believe that there are some other points, particularly 8 and 9, which get to some of the public safety issues, particularly around propane tanks and fires in camps, that I think we should vigorously address. So, if there are no further comments, we'll go ahead and move on to Point 7. So Point 7 is to amend municipal code AMC16.120.020 to allow utilization of cold weather shelter alternatives year-round to assure alternative housing is available for campers displaced by camp abatements and fund more shelter beds if needed. And the administration's response to this particular point is that it was done in 2017. The code was amended for this purpose in 2017, for two years, to expire in 2019. However, there is not enough funding to run overflow shelter year-round. Additionally, short-term assistance, diversion funds for travel to home communities, and other resources are other options for people to move out of camps. So I'll go ahead and turn to the Coalition for initial thoughts, and then I do have some questions.
The key here is, this does expire in 2019. It's true that perhaps we haven't funded it for beyond that. Doesn't mean we can't fund it, and it doesn't mean we shouldn't make this available as an option. Everyone, including the mayor's office, has indicated that the biggest need in our community in order to move forward with swift abatements of camps is the need for alternative shelters. Well, this is one mechanism of gaining alternative shelters. If we don't avail ourselves of it, then we're shooting ourselves in the foot. If we need the resources, let's discuss how much we need, and let's make a policy decision on that. Let's not take something off the table before it's ever been considered fully.
Yeah, we'll go ahead, go to Mr. Willington, please. Thank you.
How much money do we need to keep the cold weather shelters going?
Can you pass that? Thanks.
The total cost of operating an overflow shelter with the required staffing in the procedures for overflow shelter would run around $420,000 for up to, that would be up to 75 people. And then it would be incremental from there. And one clarification, and I think credit that should be given, is that the Downtown Hope Center has been operating overflow shelter continuously since 2017, using a mix of privately raised funds and volunteers, and a small bit of funding since this ordinance passed, and they've been housing 50 women quite successfully during that whole time. So this has been in operation, it's that we don't have an organization or funding beyond that to operate year-round. We save the money that is allocated for the winter months of roughly October or November through April.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. So, I may have missed some of that, Ms. Burke, but did you give a number?
Four hundred and twenty thousand.
Four hundred and twenty thousand to operate year-round?
For 75 people.
Seventy-five people.
Okay. Do you have a question?
I do have a question. I guess my, the key question is, do we know how many emergency shelter beds we need to house the population who are living without shelter, in particular, given our discussion here, the number of people who are living in illegal encampments? Do we have that number, and if so, do we know what the cost of providing shelter for that many people would be, at least for a short-term basis?
Thank you, Russ. Check, Ms. Burke.
The summer numbers were just provided in the handouts. If you didn't receive one of these, we've provided some at the front of the table up front. And so the summer number of people encountered, both in shelter or outdoors, was 1,064 this summer. That's down from 1,304 last summer. And our shelter capacity for regular shelter, if you will, is about 360 spaces. So everything above that is what we would want to account for, for summertime. In wintertime, our number runs much smaller. It's been around, it's just been short of 100 for the past two or three years. It was 79 one year, I believe it was 97 last year. And so it's roughly 100 people who are not coming in on the point in time count day. We know that our capacity, our utilization is another way to think about it. Last year, we had between 50 and 85 people, depending on the temperature. And we still know there were people who do not engage in overflow shelter and choose instead to walk the community all night, and then find a warm place to sleep during the day, or to go to an emergency department, or some other 24-hour location.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Go ahead.
So, you know, I think, I think part of the problem is, in answer to your question, Mr. Willington, we actually really don't know how many people are unsheltered in our town. And because we have not funded sufficient shelter beds, what we can't do is go into the camps and say, okay, if you want a shelter bed, the only legal right you have to be in here is if you have no sleep alternative. We're gonna drive you over to the shelter right now, and see who wants to go, and how many people are actually there because they are houseless, they are volunteering to park, to camp in a nice park, and do whatever they do there. There are many, many people who actually do not wish to choose a shelter alternative. And the reason we'll never know that is because we simply aren't making those shelter, those sleep alternatives available, and then requiring that people make that selection. And I'm gonna go bigger than this, and just, and just say, you know, from my perspective, we are way too good, way too good, to have anybody sleeping outside who does not want to be sleeping outside. We owe it to them to get them shelter beds, whether the municipality pays for them, or Catholic Social Services does, or we figure out some way for some other funding stream, private, nonprofit, or otherwise, we can't have people sleeping in our parks because they have no sleep alternative. But once we get the sleep alternatives, we can then separate the weed from the chat, and we can't do that now.
Thank you, Stephanie, Ms. Burke. And then also, Mr. Dunbar, as you know, at the back of the room, there is a space here. And is Mr. Trainee here as well?
Back there.
Okay, well, we'll try to make the space for you appear as well.
I would just like to make the point that there have been a lot of comments around opening, and you can fill in the blank, housing units, or designated camps, or shelters, and the concept of picking people up and making them go somewhere is not legally, it's not allowed. People still have rights, even though they're homeless, to choose where they go, and they can choose not to go somewhere. And that has to be honored, and the way that many of the communities who've made progress in this area have done things is through building relationships with people, and that's where outreach workers come in, and forming relationships so that people will trust you. But it would not be legal to just ask people or tell people, you have to go to this location, unless there is some threshold, criteria, that they're unable to care for themselves or harm to themselves or others. So, you know, we can, we can, I think that would be a third good way of determining capacity needs, is having the spaces open all of the time, and then looking at utilization as people come in, but you have to have the resources to engage people to come in. You can't just tell them you have to go there.
I don't wanna be misapprehended, because I may have been, I'm not suggesting that you whisk people up against your will to the shelter. What I'm saying is that people only have the right to be in a public space if they have no sleeping alternative. They do not have the right to choose to live in a public park. If they are offered a sleeping alternative, they have a legal right, we have a legal right to remove them. And if they don't want to go to the shelter, they can go wherever else they want to, but they can't sleep in a park. That park's illegal. And the other piece, the outreach, is that if you look at the plan, the Anchor Home Plan, you know, most of the case management and the entry of people into the coordinated entry system is happening on Third Avenue. So anybody in the encampment simply is not getting directly entered into that system, regardless. And you can still do outreach, but you just won't find them in our parks, where we prefer to be.
Thank you. Thank you. Chris? All right, so I think this is the second time that I've addressed this, if we could please not clap in between comments. Thank you. It's very disruptive to the meeting. Mr. Constant?
Thank you. I often contemplate that issue of wherever else they want to go. Because I have my neighbors, and I deal with this issue more than anybody else on this body who's elected. I hear every day, multiple times a day, from people who are concerned about this issue. And I have very vocal neighbors who say, I don't care where they go, they just can't be in our parks, wherever else they want to go. And where do they end up? If they're not in our parks, where do they end up? And that's a real devil's dilemma for those of us who live in the downtown. Because the issue is really driven from all parts of town, including people reverting to this first district above north of Ship Creek. Of course, it's bled out, not Ship Creek, Chester Creek. It's bled out, which is maybe a good thing for us who live here. But the fact is, if there's nowhere else to go, they're going to be in your front yard. They're going to be on the corner that has an empty lot, on your block. Just today, I had to get somebody removed, had a van that was broken down on a neighbor's lot, where people were going to the bathroom outside, because they didn't have anywhere else to go. And so there's no simple statement of wherever else they want to go. That's the predicate. But at the heart of the question is a resource question. It's a money question. So I have this budget that I'm sorting through right now, that has a hole in it. It's negative. We're in a recessionary cycle, and the fact is that we have less people in Anchorage this year than we did last year. So guess what happens? Our tax cap goes down, our money available disappears. We have less money this year to deal with this problem and other problems in the city and other priorities than we did last year, and the year before that. And so the heart of this question comes back to every one of you. Not the 11 people up here at the Mayor's Office, but you. What are you willing to pay for, to make this work? Because it's a resource question. And the fact is, you probably will see, question on the bond, how are we going to fund these services? I see people shaking their head. The reality is, all of these services, all of these systems cost money. And they're going to come from us, all of us.
Is your backyard?
I do, ma'am.
Good.
I do. So that's the question I have for you. What are you willing to pay for this? Because there is no magic money, there's a hole in the system.
All right, and I think, thank you, Mr. Constant, I think that's an issue that we are going to come back to throughout this meeting, is the resource question. All right, if there are no other comments, I'd like us to move forward to the next point. All right, so point number eight and nine, which are coupled together, at least in terms of the responsibility, Stephanie and Russ. Number eight is to amend the municipal code to allow confiscation of materials used for illegal fires by those camping in public space, and to allow immediate abatement of camps violating fire codes as public safety risks. Number nine is to enforce existing code prohibitions to open burns, unopened burns, and use of cooking appliances and fuels such as propane stoves, grills, wood stoves, outside designated areas. I'll go ahead, turn to Stephanie and Russ to provide initial comment.
So originally, the proposal on number eight might have been more controversial, because there was no storage that had been arranged yet by municipality. And firefighters don't like to have to remove illegal fire-making equipment like whales and other things like this from sites when they're being used. But it does appear that storage has been arranged, and that it could be. Therefore, the proposal here basically is to change the code so that anything that is, anything that is the implements of fire, and people are using grills and wood stoves and propane things inside tents in order to heat, in order to cook, those kinds of things, they're very, very dangerous, both to the community and to the individual using it in the tent. And what's happening is, the police are, I mean, the fire duty called out, they simply ask them to put the fire out, and then they leave. And there is no code opportunity for actually forfeiting the item of, that is really of danger to the community. So that is essentially the proposal, which is to amend the public nuisance code, to add fire, grill, ski, and those fuels, any combustion or burning, et cetera, et cetera, it's on the page, you can read it, as things that can be forfeited immediately and taken. With respect to enforcing existing code, it looks like the municipality thinks that that's occurring already. Unfortunately, it's not occurring in any proactive way, it's occurring when you call a fire, a fire truck out, and they basically tell them to stop burning, and put the fire out, and the fire truck leaves, and the fire is forgotten again. That's my experience.
Yeah, I would say, you know, beyond Stephanie's experience, I've also had experiences of, I'm sure, many others in the community. These fires occur every day, and some of them turn into fires of tents, endangering the lives of the people living there. For those of you who looked at Nextdoor, the social media, there was certainly a tent fire in Valley of the Moon Park. We do not proactively prevent this. We have to have an effective means to intervene. If we want to, you know, the administration's response is, you know, enforcement takes money, we don't want to do that. Well, it's, if it requires somebody out, making sure that there are no fires burning in our public spaces, then we better have it, because pretty soon we're going to lose a neighborhood somewhere.
Thank you, Stephanie, thank you, Russ. Any questions on these points for my colleagues? So I would just say that on, sure, sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A question actually for Mego, the comments on number eight, as far as confiscating the farm. Confiscating those into the house.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, yeah, we can certainly, actually, there was some work on this, Mr. Gates and I have talked with members on this body about potential footage on this point several months back, and we certainly could make them our, sort of, as we never think of devil's the beast, we're trying to figure out how to define, we have certain, sort of, codified numbers that aren't, about which areas of parks allow things like a barbecue for someone's child versus, you know, areas where that's prohibited. But we certainly could do this, I think. I agree also that the immediate abatement piece with a storage backup could be something that's possible. Without a storage backup, I think we would run afoul of the case law, but certainly with a storage backup, I think we could learn more crafting that as well. So if anyone is interested in pursuing that, I mean, we have definitely a certain name on the draft that would address those issues. Specifically, it's point eight.
Sure. Anything further, Ms. LaFrance?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just add that I am interested in pursuing that and sponsoring something like that.
And before we go to you, Mr. Constant, I just want to also add and chime in that Mr. Croft and I, who, Mr. Croft's going to be here today, I assume, we worked with Mego on some of these parameters, and I am glad to have Ms. LaFrance join us, I think this is something vitally important for us to do. Mr. Constant?
Just one note of clarity, the AFD's mission is not enforcement. And it's super critical that we all recognize that and protect that idea. And it's important, because we want a fire department that can safely proceed into any environment, whether it's a burning building, urban, scary neighborhood, a camp in the woods, and not have them threatened with the fear of being a law enforcement entity. Our law enforcement entities wear that vest and are bulletproof, because people shoot at them. And so, all across the nation, fire departments do not enforce laws at all, because it protects all of us from bad situations. So whatever system we create, it can't rely on AFD being an enforcement tool. And there are ways we can do this, there can be alternative teams, like we funded the camps team, and that can be more coordinated, which comes back to the heart of this issue, a coordinated system. But I humbly recommend everyone protect your fire department not to be an enforcement agency.
Thank you, Mr. Constant. All right, any other comments on this particular point? Okay, thank you. So, same then, we'll move on to point number 11. And so this point states, to begin immediately publishing routine and complete reports on all the legal camps identified and actions taken to remove them, including when they were identified, noticed, abated, and cleaned. So municipal actions are transparent and accountable to citizens, make the data searchable online by citizens. I'll go ahead, turn to the Russ and Stephanie to provide initial response, and then I will turn to the administration.
This is really just a good government proposal. We've gone for years without any real data. We still, today, don't know how many camps are out there. We need to know that. We can't take really effective action until we know, have good information that leads us to where we need to be. I, I'm gratified to see that the administration has begun to publish some, some of its data. We now at least know how many reports have been made of camps. We still don't know how many camps are out there. And we won't know until when a report is made, someone goes out and looks. But they will have to reconcile multiple reports, I think we all recognize that. We also need to know how effective our system of response is. And without performance measures, we have no idea whether we're doing good, bad, or indifferent with responding. I, I think, you know, this is just a base-level requirement for government to report to its citizens about how it spends its dollars. As importantly, one of the reasons for asking to have this information online, citizens in our community traverse the public spaces constantly. I've had people tell me, and I've heard it repeatedly, that they're afraid to go in some places. And having good information about where camps are is useful for them. It can help guide them to places that are less threatening than others, and at least get them using our public green spaces again. There is and will be discussion here about the controversy of whether or not we are endangering campers by reporting the locations of camps and making that a public information. And I will tell you, from my own personal perspective, it is already public information. Any citizen who walks through the Chester Creek Greenbelt will tell you where the camps are. Any citizen who wished to harm a camper could do so at any time, they wished to do so. It has not happened. So that is a red herring, from my view. More broadly, posting the location of a camp is less intrusive than posting the location and the value of my home, which is done. The mayor's home is there, the value of that is available. I've got, I've printed off sheets of that. It is not a threat to know where the camps are, it's not a threat to the campers. Anyone who wished to harm them could, no one has, we will not see that in the future. The public has a right to know what's going on in its community.
When I was a judge sentencing front of the phones every day, my information was elsewhere known on the public website. You know, the only data we have here is for the money that's been spent. 369 camps were raided, and 218 tons of garbage were cleaned up. We don't know if those camps were duplicate camps, we don't know who was in them, we don't know what their needs were, we don't know why they were there, and we don't know where they went. So, it would seem to me that, you know, just in terms of, as Russ said, basic governmental accountability, trying to demonstrate to the community that the municipality is actually on top of this. The other thing is that there needs to be a solid feedback loop to community members, because the only way that you get attention to a camp is by reporting it yourself. And at this point, the only way to report a camp is to figure out what its GPS location is. That's not particularly within the capability of the average bear. But those average bears who actually go to the trouble of trying to figure that all out and put it onto a, you know, request for camp removal, will never get a feedback loop about what the timing is for that, whether anybody read it, whether there's going to be a cleanup, what's going to happen. So the information that has come back to us in terms of data, with respect to whatever information went into the municipality hopper about what the needs were here vis-à-vis encampments, is completely lost without some kind of reflective publishing of these things.
Thank you, Stephanie, thank you, Russ. Okay, I'll turn it over to Mr. Constant, and then Ms. Burke to talk about the process we have currently.
So I have long been, continue to be advocate for releasing the kind of data that can streamline this system and ensure the public camps are being cleaned up one in an hour. So that part, I have no qualms with, and continue to push for that kind of report. But the idea of a map, it's so interesting. You know, I have a personal report of, on this Friday, just four days ago, a citizen going to Town Square and trashing a place where people were camped, and telling them they were disgusting and to go back to the village, and really causing physical violence. And so it's not that it doesn't happen, and it's not that it couldn't happen, it's that, you know, we just have, it is, it is a fact that that wasn't on a map, they just knew. So you're correct to that part of your statement, but the fact is, we are dealing with people in heightened emotional states from this issue. And so some care and caution is warranted in the provision of GPS data. I've long said we need a spreadsheet, a table that identifies within a certain geographic area, how many reports, and validates them down to specific encampments, and then there is a feedback loop. I do agree, because that way we can provide confidence to the public on how long it actually takes to clear the camp. But there are some, these are scary times.
I'd like to provide just some information about how this process works, and how ahead of the rest of the country we are in using GIS mapping. There are two other communities that identified in our networks that are using this tool. So there are no templates to go from. The GIS engineer within the municipality is helping the different departments, there's three of them, police, occasionally fire, parks and recreation, and the social service coordinators to have information that they can access to make this system a complete system. And so the reports do come in from the public, that is, crowdsourcing of data is something that happens in other areas. Potholes is a good example, people call in where there's a pothole, and then the resources are dispatched. And while it may be considered a burden, or government asking the community to do that work, it's just simply practical, but there's hundreds of thousands of people in our community that can provide input, and then it makes the resources more efficient to deploy, so the police know exactly where to go, sometimes exactly, because it is true that using this technology is hard, and there's a lot of people who aren't used to, you know, knowing where the GIS function is on your phone, and whether it's on or off, or whether your PIN is in Anchorage, or the one that was in the Atlantic Ocean. But it's, it's valuable information, it's not perfect information, it's not accurate information, but it helps us be more efficient. And then those PINs become part of a police record. And this is where it rubs, that those, those open cases are part of what the police use, sometimes to pursue their work in terms of warrants or other investigations that need to happen, and as soon as they're finished with the legal period... period, it gets closed. And it's the closed data that can be reported as soon as we identify a timeline that's acceptable and a way that's acceptable, whether it be a map or a spreadsheet. We have to work through these processes. There's no community that has a map for us that can, a map, so to speak, a guideline for us to use. We have to figure it out for ourselves, which means going through establishment of data sharing policies around GIS data that involves persons rather than potholes. And there's a lot that goes into it. And it is good government to continue to push forward and to improve what we're doing and try to make these things work. And it's not necessarily a sign of ill will or not intending to be collaborative, that we're not able to put out these reports. It's that we're not able to put out these reports yet. And we're getting information to you as quickly as possible and in the best form possible that legally protects all residents of Anchorage.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Constant. Thank you, Ms. Burke. I'd like to turn it over to Legal to provide any additional insights.
So, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to touch briefly on the legal points that underscore what Nancy just spoke about, and I've talked about this in small meetings of this committee before. There are several different elements of the information that we have about camps which are confidential under either local or state law. And so the challenge is anything that is released has to navigate around these prohibitions on things that can't be released. The things we can't release include the identity of anyone who reports a camp, anyone who makes a, it's the same prohibition that precludes us from releasing the identity of someone who makes a code complaint. And that's to protect citizens who are making those complaints from having their information made public, make time retaliation, to make everyone feel comfortable in our community with reporting an issue, reporting a code violation, reporting a legal camp. We can't release that information. We also can't release information on active police investigations. Our camp posting process, our cap, police officers rely on Title VIII, which is our criminal code, to post camps. And so any camp abatement process that is in progress that hasn't been completed, as Nancy noted, is technically a criminal investigation and is subject to that prohibition. That prohibition is in place to make sure to protect the integrity of police investigations across the board. It applies to any kind of open investigation. We also are precluded from releasing any information about health, mental health, medical, juvenile, and personal problem, personality problem information. So anything that's obtained by the municipality in attempting to offer medical or social services to individuals in camps also has to be protected and cannot be released. Again, I think the policy rationale for that is obviously municipality offers several different types of public health services, and the information we gather and providing those services cannot be provided to the public in response to public records of crime or otherwise. And so I think the practical problem that Nancy's team faces is extracting the data that can be shared from those various layers of data which is legally, which are legally protected, and figuring out a way to practically offer that information. And that's what her team is focused on attempting to overcome. There are a few by nature of the work that is being done, needs to navigate these various layers of confidentiality protection provided in state municipal law.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn Pearson. Yes, Russ?
Just a couple of comments regarding to that. There are several things. I think the public is fine with reporting on the website, however cumbersome it may be. The issue for the public, I think, is never hearing back a response, and not hearing back sometimes for months to know when a camp is abated. Secondarily, a couple of issues regarding the legal points just made. No one is asking, I don't believe in the public, for specific identifying information about campers. No one wants to know who the campers are or what their particular identities are, or their mental health problems, or any of those things. On an individual level, we all recognize that's protected data. We would not want that information out about ourselves. On a cumulative level, however, that information is not protected. We can know how many people had a particular type of issue, such as they needed mental health treatment, they needed substance abuse treatment. And if we don't know those things, and we don't tell the public about them, we will never have the resources that we need to make the needed services available. So while I understand all of the limitations I've worked within systems that are confidential for my entire career, there are reasons why you provide the public with information that helps them understand what's actually occurring so they can support those things that are necessary to do something about it.
I guess the other thing I want to add is, you know, there's obviously a huge, what's the word? It's just incredibly cumbersome to be collecting data that you want to be able to know something about in terms of who's using our public spaces and also crime data and crime prevention data by collecting data on these camps in the format of individual police reports. So if you didn't quite catch what was just said here, you know, the mayor will tell me over and over again, what do you want me to do, arrest him all? But what I just heard is that the way we are doing this is each one of these camp contacts is a police investigation under Title VIII, Title VIII or criminal code. Every one of these are basically police reports. And there is absolutely no reason to have to have a data collection system for a specific type of thing within our municipality that has to be recovered from an individual police report. These are not investigations of criminal. We have specifically said we don't want to criminalize homelessness. So there has to be a better way to collect data on our homeless, houseless, and whatever other populations we have in the parks.
Yeah, I just want to follow up with that and ask, there is no legal reason, if I understand it, why these camp abatements are considered criminal investigations. Is that correct? In other words, we can delegate the abatement, the posting of the notices and other things. We don't actually treat these as criminal investigations. It's just that we've assigned the police to do the abatement, and the police processes are criminal processes, and they employ those, and they thereby consider each and every abatement effort an investigation.
That's not entirely correct. Our legal camping statute, Title XV, states that someone can, that defines illegal camping as a violation of the Code of Police Law or any other thing. And so we process it under Title VIII, I believe, because we enforce the resource under Title VIII in order to, and we've had ABD engaging in this. I think that also because Title VIII provides different remedies. Title 25, the remedy for Title 25 is simply that you receive a citation or a fine. There is no other remedy under, for code enforcement under Title 25. There's no, whereas ABD criminal action has further remedies that follow. Someone, for instance, refuses to comply with nor their authority. So there are different implications. We could certainly explore an alternate legal structure for this. But our legal structure does rely on this underlying for, the offense of illegal camping is defined as a violation either of the criminal code or of Title 25.
But we've made a specific policy decision that we are not using the criminal code to enforce camping, and I presume that if there is a, we're not arresting anyone for anything related to camp. If someone refuses to leave and we, the police, are actively involved, I'd be amazed to hear that we've ever arrested anyone during the process of the camp abatement. From my perspective, that's another huge hole that's lacking. I talked with Lieutenant Carson and the mayor's deputy chief of staff about these issues, and they cannot tell me whether they've ever arrested anybody in a camp. They can't tell you whether there's an association between the location of camps and crime in the neighborhoods. We have a huge gap in information. The fact that we've elected to use the police as our enforcement mechanism despite not wanting to criminalize homelessness means we are essentially hiding the ball under the rubric of a criminal investigation and not using and providing data to the public about what's going on.
Well, and if I could just point to the code, illegal camp sites, an illegal camp site is an area where one or more persons are camping when public law violates Section 84501. That's your criminal trespass statute. Chapter 2570, that's your parks statute, or any other provision of this code. And an illegal camp site is subject to abating by the municipality. The municipal official responsible for an abatement may accomplish this with the assistance of a contract or association or organization. So you can delegate this responsibility if you are going to use Chapter 25 or any other provision of the code. And since we decided we aren't going to charge people with trespass for camping in public spaces, then I don't know why you wouldn't use the rest of the code. And as Russ Breck pointed out at the Assembly's Crime and Public Safety Committee meeting, it was rather shocking to hear that the police cannot, for the same reason they can't pull data for this purpose, they can't tell you how many warrants they've served in camps. They can't tell you how many sexual assaults have occurred in camps. In a state where sexual assault is like one of your number one crimes, wouldn't you want to know just as basic crime prevention, how many sexual assaults occurred in camps? So it's an inefficient, cumbersome way to try to keep data about encampments or really anything else.
Thank you. I'll go ahead. I'll go ahead and turn to Ms. Burke to respond. All right. All right. Looks like Ms. Lynn Pearson got the points. Ms. Lynn Pearson, did you have anything else to respond?
No, I don't have anything else.
I have a question for that.
Sure, Mr. Constant.
So as I understand it, when we have the police or anyone going to abate a camp, aren't we effectively engaging in eviction of a kind? And can you talk about the rules around how that works or how it can be worse or better? Because it seems to me there are a few rights to be, you know, enforcement actions that are telling people, you must go. And I understand the idea they have no right to be there, but that's the conundrum we're dealing with.
Yeah, I think it's a little bit of a complicated question. I'll try to give a simple answer and not the answer of someone who was available to discuss this. We actually do have, we're not technically conducting an eviction when we remove a camp, although we can under law. You know, the code does state that we can use an ABD action, that forcible entry into container legally is for an eviction action. A forcible entry into container takes considerably more time than the camp abatement process that we're permitted to do in code. So I toyed a bit with whether or not we should explore that code permitted option. But again, it takes considerably more time. There are several layers of protection and notice required in the midst of a forcible entry into container. And then even when an order is received from the court, you, as the holder of that order, cannot physically compel someone to leave unless you come back with law enforcement to accompany and to enforce that order. So what we're effectively doing by sending ABD out to engage in this process is creating a shortcut to an eviction that is permitted by law and you get provided for in code. And while it doesn't feel immediate, it is far more immediate than if you are trying to get a squatter or a renter out of your rental property. The process that you go through is far more lengthy than the 10-day notice and immediate law enforcement presence to escort people off a plan that we are permitted to do under this process. Again, we are permitted to actually engage in eviction, but it's a far more cumbersome process.
Thank you, Mr. Constant. And that actually gets to one of the parking lot items that I had back in point number one. So we'll go back to that when we go back and go to point number one. Did you have any additional?
Just with respect to eviction, I don't want anyone to be disinformative about this, because I've been evicted for 25 years, okay? Evictions generally are required because someone at some point had a privilege to be on the property. Someone gave him permission. I want to make it really clear that these are people who are not camping with permission. And so eviction is not appropriate, although it could be appropriate under certain circumstances, and especially those circumstances where you look like you're permitting them to stay there as you do.
Sure, Ms. Burke.
I will certainly let the legal minds weigh in on their expertise area, but from the problematic or the person perspective in the camps and when this process is happening, the mix of police and social service has been very effective. It's been the thing that helps people know this is serious, we will enforce this, and yet there are people here who can help you get to the next place so that we don't just see you here again next week, even though we know that is happening. We know people come back around. But having this multi-disciplinary approach is a very effective thing for strategies and what we're seeing across the country. And the point two, if you can't describe the nature of the need in the camp, not the individual people's particular conditions, but the makeup of the need of people in your community is very well taken. And in fact, it's one of the things that's been a particular struggle with the breakdown in the behavioral health system of the state and the impact that that's had on the kinds of people camping and the types of activities that we've seen. These are directly related. And as such, we've just been able to implement a mobile program, a software program, that outreach workers will now have that will be able to record this kind of information in a protective way, but will also summarize it into an aggregate in a dashboard that will be available for review on a regular basis and is in fact an aggregate that can be viewed publicly. So that information, we've just been able to go through the process to get that resource, and it will be online shortly.
Do we know from this summer, I might ask, how many of these 369 camps abated actually were successful in achieving either shelter space, housing, or any other sleep alternative as a result of the multi-disciplinary approach?
Well, I can say with a lot of certainty that we have 300 fewer people that are out there this summer. However, I can't tell you by name. We don't have the resources to follow 300 or 500 people in the community with case management. We have to prioritize by people we know have highest needs. And so we can look at those folks and make some estimates about it, but the answer to every person on the list, do we know where they went? We do not.
All right. Thank you, Stephanie. Thank you, Ms. Burke. So we have about 15 minutes left before we do some final comments and then the public comment. Any final questions or thoughts on this one before we go back to the parking lot items? Okay, so I think we started discussing point number one, which I will read quickly. So point number one was to add a public health and safety component to the 2018 Strategic Action Plan of the Anchorage Community Plans and Homelessness. And that was done, but the, Stephanie and Russ had an additional point regarding using our nuisance code to deal with public health and safety issues. And I asked Legal to respond, and I think they were beginning to do so, particularly surrounding eviction. So I would hope that Legal wants to add any more.
Sure. Speaking specifically to the question of why we would conduct camp or address camp issues under the Title 15 camp code as opposed to under the other, the way we would address other public nuisance provisions. Again, I think it's a time piece. I think we, maybe we're also concerned about abating abandoned properties. There are issues that probably may be set in conversation with me about the same issue, which is that abatement of other public nuisances is also not instantaneous and generally takes a much longer period, again, than the 10-day notice period that we have. If we're attempting to enforce other provisions of Title 15, other public nuisance provisions, the process that is followed by code enforcement is as quick as possible, but is rather lengthy. It involves notice. It involves an opportunity to cure the issue before a citation is received. It involves an opportunity to appeal the citation to the administrative hearing officer, and it generally involves presence on the floor before we're able to actually forcibly abate a nuisance. And that process can sometimes take up to six months. So the reason we don't follow that process on on to address camp issues on public land is because the camp abatement process for, specifically for public land, is far faster than our code enforcement capacities for any other nuisance issue under the code.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn Pearson. Did you have any questions?
That's not a question. I think there's a potential misapprehension. I don't think that we were suggesting that you use the full process, the legal process of notice, abatement, et cetera, et cetera. Enforcement can be many different things. And one way to enforce things is like parents do. You go into their room and say, "Can you put this stuff in the trash bag?" Because pending the fact that we're going to abate your camp, we don't want them to be too hungry, however many tons of garbage here that we got to clean up. So if we have public health going in with Sharpie boxes and we have solid waste going in with cans and saying, "Look, we cannot remove you now because we do have notice requirements." And if you don't actually keep the camp clean, then we may take other steps. But the truth of the matter is that asking people to do things and providing them with the ideas to do it pending legal removal could go a really long way.
So we're going to be going to the public comment period soon, and I encourage you to testify at that point.
If you would be courteous and wait until public comment, you'll have your opportunity. Thank you. Ms. Lynn Pearson, you discussed the 10-day period as though that's the, I recognize that's the primer, but we've also employed the 72-hour and we have other shorter periods for abatement in our code. We've used on standard the now 10-day period, but we certainly have other options. And we've employed some of those recently, most recently in particular, because we have implemented storage capacity. Part of the goal of that is to allow for swifter abatement before the accumulation of all the huge amounts of material that we've seen. So we're not just limited to the 10-day.
That's a good issue. I think my point is simply that even the 10-day is considerably faster than our, than the, how our code enforcement team is able to move on other public nuisances. I think the point about sending in different departments to provide resources is not really a legal point. That's entirely a resource question. Could we send out solid waste services with trash cans? That's not a legal question. That's really, do we have the funding to be able to do that and the ability to be able to offer those services?
Thank you, Russ. Thank you, Ms. Lynn Pearson. So just keeping an eye on the time, we have 10 minutes. And so, Mr. Constant, you're going to get the last bite of this one.
I don't disagree with the idea of creating opportunities to do the right thing. And just for people out there to visualize what that looks like. It does, Ms. Lynn Pearson, kind of suggest it look like solid waste services sending a truck down the Chester Creek with some kind of schedule and also toilets, because really, that's what we're talking about here, is human waste and trash. And so I don't know how we implement toilets. I've been talking about toilets in this city for seven years because in this district, our streets are bathrooms. And it is painful to me to witness what goes on. And so if my neighbors are comfortable having a talk about trash and toilets on the Chester Creek Trail, I'm happy to lead on that because really, providing the trashers, it strikes me as awful, you know, having trash service on the Chester Creek Trail. But if that's what we have to do, then let's do it.
If I may argue, the, it's been interesting that there's some people who say, "Put in amenities so that we can have more clean camps," and others say, "No, those will drop campers." But my point about the Chester Creek Trail and some of the other stretches of trail is that as a trail user, there are long stretches of trail that you can't get access to a restroom. So let's plan for the whole community. Let's plan for, you know, more use of those green spaces and trails. And let's plan for the needs of the community and include downtown in that. There's no access to public restrooms without going into a business. And those of us who've had kids in tow or, you know, other needs, it's challenging to find a restroom. So let's do a plan for public restrooms.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. All right, so we're going to go ahead and move on to points two, and hopefully we can address point 12 simultaneously as well. And Mr. Rada, if you can come up. Oh, there you are. So, Mr. Rada, if you can address, we had talked on the phone previously, and you wanted to address a couple of items that were at the last meeting. So this is your opportunity to do so.
Is that my face?
Thank you.
We talked about a couple of things over in the plan and lots of comments that come forward about how we can apply certain steps that are more effective in little snippets, bits, and pieces. And we'll jump back very quickly to what you said, Russ, and that's garbage bags, for example. That's a pretty common thing we already do. We may not be abating the camp, but when we're in an area, we ask people, we provide the trash bags at that time. Say, "Clean up your area. We'll come back and pick it up when we're on our sweep coming back through." So that's pretty common. It's almost on a daily basis. So that's just one piece. Some of the things that we're now struggling with in the budget, there is a proposed code enforcement position. Just go back to your item about being able to do the enforcement stuff. And I think I responded, one, this does not mean a full-time continuous monitoring, but we have a host of other problems in parks and public spaces with encroachments, damages, application of different titles across the municipality. That position would go a long way to assisting Parks and Recreation in a whole sense and dealing with multiple issues. But it will in fact be part of their function and task to do the monitoring within the parks. So when we get a report of something, we will then have in person that it's part of their responsibility to engage and go out and see, make determination, and actually be able to start a report, an investigation, a follow-up, et cetera, things like that. So that's one of our proposals. There's been a couple of proposals about how many signs should be in parks. Want every 50 feet, 75 feet? You want a wallpaper, you know, areas? I get just as many comments, honestly, about not putting so many signs. Some people find it very offensive. Where do you find the balance? If we know we've got hot spots, I get it. Maybe employing certain locations may be more sign-inflicted. But some people have kind of said, "Well, the entire green belt corridor should be signed. It's not necessary." Maybe in focal areas. Those are things that were considered. And actually, we're getting some quotes on what those kinds of signs should cost. One of the other things is talking about what the abatement process is. We have seasonal workforce. We propose within the budget that we get some additional funds for next year to expand our services, lengthen our season. It would be my hope and goal that we could start earlier in the year. April 20th to May 1st is just kind of a target frame and continue it all the way to the end of October. Weather conditions as they are right now, we've still got an opportunity to keep going. We're limiting our resources to community work service, and that's a roll of the dice every day. You never know how many you're going to get. But if we had a dedicated workforce consistent with starting in the spring, continuing till, what, a rain for snowfall, then I think we could make the difference as well. So there are pieces that we have tried to implement by taking different steps and strategies to take a look at where we can effectively respond back to the public in a variety of other ways. And I think I've just kind of identified these three that have been brought up in the conversations. So hopefully that helps.
Yeah, I have a lot.
Sure.
So, Mr. Rada, I want to tell you that you have an eternal feeling of done gratitude for the work that you do. But I have to say that, you know, one of the other thefts to the community is the theft of your services because Parks and Recreation's mission in the statutes is basically to unify our parks and to improve them and to make them larger and more interesting for us to recreate in. And basically, your department has been turned into a hazardous waste removal room. And from my perspective, that is a taking from the community and from what we should get from your department for our parks. That's the first thing. So you were never intended to do this. You do a great job, but I don't think that's the point. I think the point is that from our perspective, we think this entire thing, from soup to nuts, should be prioritized. You know, the police don't want to do this work, frankly. Probably the only people that want to do this work are the MIT team. The fire department want to do this work. You know, your department shouldn't be doing this work, whether you want to do it or not do it. It's not your mission. And nobody's collecting data. And nobody's doing, you know, what needs to be done, really, in terms of trying to create a coordinated system with the kind of strategies you're talking about from the beginning of patrolling for and looking for encampments to doing the outreach to these encampments, to collecting data about who's in them, to noticing them, to storing the property, and to abating them. And, you know, in circumstances in this city where we don't really have a particular department that is dedicated to a particular series of problems, like encampments are, they span multiple departments in terms of their challenges. But in areas like that, we've done things like contract for community service patrol or Anchorage Safety Patrol with a privatized contractor that responds to a request for proposals and does what is asked by the municipality. And it does no longer require all of the internal coordinations of figuring out how to get the police and outreach and, you know, parks with or without the community work service, you know, capacity, all lined up to go do what needs to be done within the timeframe of the law. And it's like a slinky. You remember the old slinkies? You know, you send the first part of the slinky out and the middle kind of follows, but it's a little slow. And then the end of the slinky is like, "Oh, wait a minute. The beginning and the middle are moving. I'm going to go too, but whoops, I'm going to flip over the front." Because, you know, I mean, it's not a strategic or sound system for doing any of the things that we really need from soup to nuts. So while I love the work that you have done for our community, removing 200 and some tons of trash, you know, from my precious parklands, my hat's off to you. But my heart aches for the fact that you have been co-opted as a department away from what you should be doing.
Thank you, Stephanie. Thank you, Mr. Rada. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Burke.
I would like to offer the other side of that assertion, and that may very well be what it seems like from the outside. But I can tell you, doing this work since 2015, without this work being done in the community for the last 20 years, that the first calls that I received in the mayor's office were from the police. And there was a particular call from Sergeant Haywood who said, "As soon as we heard that someone was going to really dig in and look at this system and work on camps and try to solve these problems, I asked for a transfer back to CAP. I want to do this work." Officer Jones has been in the police department, in the CAP team, for a very long time, saying she doesn't want to leave that team. She wants to do this work. They view this as important safety work for the community. They're passionate about it. Every person that we've been able to touch with this system, we're being recognized as a community ahead of a number of communities, not only with the camp process that we're implementing, linking it to overflow shelter and with two federal demonstration housing grants in the community. We are ahead. We're passionate about this work. I wake up every day very excited to go to this job. I love this work. And I think every person on this team, including the good people at Parks and Rec, are committed to this work and want us to get to a place where Anchorage can be a safe place for everyone and where green spaces are available to the entire community. I want that too. And we will continue to work on this system. And we will remain dedicated to this for the remainder of this term.
And just as a word of caution, anytime I hear somebody say that I don't know where you're going to go, but you can't stay here, that in the end, the answer to the conundrum is to find housing, actual housing in the community. If you go to Third and Carlock, if you have any life down there, if you ever tried to be down there, you know it's a living nightmare. It is the worst place in Alaska. It's an insufferable, inhumane trap. And every policy decision we've had for the last 30 years has driven all of the people suffering from behavioral health crises right to that piece of earth. What that translates into is there were 300 calls for service there in 2003. There were 16,000 calls for service there last year. And so any solution that you hear people talk about that drives this problem to the north of town, they're all full up. And all the rest of this town has a responsibility to pick up some portion of this system of services. And that is to house individuals who can work and who can be taken care of and take care of themselves in other parts of this town. Because while it has worked for some 50 or 60 years to drive it north, the flood has exceeded the capacity. And I have members on this body who say, "Well, that kid who was under the bridge, we should have let him stay there." Right? Because it's not in the neighborhood. But the fact is, these services need to be distributed sensibly across this town. And that means housing. That means social services. It means all of it. And I thank you all for being here because this is a very difficult conversation. It's been going on for years. And the fact is, my neighborhood takes the brunt of it, and my neighbors are champions for living in this. And thank you all for being here.
Okay, so before we close this part of the meeting and move on to public comment, I'd like to again thank Stephanie and Russ and many other community members for your extensive work on formulating these 12 policy suggestions. I also want to say a special thanks to Ms. Burke, Rebecca Lynn Pearson, Dean Gates, John Rada, Carissa Suckey, and other city staff for assisting the Assembly to better understand the implications and hurdles to implementation of these 12 policy ideas. We have gone through an extensive public process and listened to extensive community input on not only these 12 policy suggestions, but about homelessness at large in our community. Now, it's up to the Assembly and the administration to continue moving forward on these 12 points and to review and debate resource allocation. This debate will be the next step and final step in this current process as we have thorough discussion of priorities in the 2019 budget. We will continue this discussion at the regular meeting of the Assembly Committee on Homelessness on next Wednesday, October 24th, from 11:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. at City Hall in the eighth-floor Mayor's Conference Room. At this meeting, the administration will present a variety of budget proposals and ideas which directly correlate to these 12 points and will help shore up gaps in our current service system. To the public at large, I want to thank you again for being here today and want to invite you to testify before the entire Assembly during our budget hearings. I can't emphasize how important it is for you to do that. These hearings will be October 23rd and November 7th in the Assembly chambers at the Luzeck Library. I suggest those interested in testifying arrive between 6:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m. If you cannot attend, please send us your email testimony at WWMAS@uniMUNI.org. With that, we're going to go ahead and begin the audience participation. John, can we get that mic back up there? Thanks. And then, because, oh, can I just get a show of hands of folks who would be interested in testifying today? Just so I can do the math. Okay, so with about 10 people, I think we are good to do two minutes per person. So if folks want to line up, we're going to sit close to here. This is where you will be doing your public testimony. And if you could just give us your first, last name and what part of town you live in. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Tanya Steichen. And I am looking for outreach, which I started myself because I was stuck on homelessness, foster homes, abuse, incarceration, 17 years ago, et cetera. So I know different barriers, and I've overcome and survived. And since released in 2005, I just happen to have two organizations. And since released in 2005, I just happen to have two organizations. And we had to be housing for a year to teach me goals, to believe in me. And then the Women's Resource and Kodiak, where I learned and I got all my certifications. It took someone to actually treat me as a human being, none of my past, and to where now I'm able to help others, which I don't have funding. I've had this for two years, I work extra jobs, I volunteer at food banks, I do what it takes to help others in need, because I know what it's like and I know the barriers. I help them with their paperwork, I help them with their appeals for housing, I help them with their disability and their appeals for that. I don't act risky, I do that on my own, I foster kids that I take on. It is possible for success, they can't ever be overcome. I volunteer at a food bank. If people show up at food banks and say, hey, Sally, you know, is there anything that you need help with or any barriers you're facing? Someone, one-on-one, at the Brother Francis, Yiddo Beef Food, at the Soup Kitchen, there are so many opportunities to treat them like human beings and actually get to know what their barriers, what their needs, and help them and follow up. And there are volunteers come and help at the church, volunteers come and help at Risky that will come help as a community, collaboration, not competition. That's the only thing that is gonna make a difference.
Thank you, ma'am, for just for all of your hard work.
My name is Linda Chase, I'm with Take Back Our Community, which is a crime and safety committee of the Rogers Park Community Council. And I say to the young woman who just spoke, thank you for taking a responsible way of making your life better. And I think that's what we all have to do, is to be responsible for what we do and also what we don't do. And for the Assembly members, as you come into this budget process, your community is not saying, you know, we don't want to help these people. We are not saying that. What we are saying is, we want you to fund a camp in Ba- a Ba'atans, a cleanup, that you cannot do this anymore. Because what's happening is, we are enabling people. People who hand out food or water or money to people standing on street corners, that's enabling a lifestyle. And if this Assembly, because you folks have the say over where the money, how it moves around, if you don't stop enabling as part of this community, nothing's gonna change. And it's not like, I love to go to work, I love to do my job, that's not the point. The point is, all of you Assembly people need to listen to your community. You have to put aside all of these, I love my job, I want to help people, but you need to listen to the community and do what needs to be done.
Thank you, Ms. Chase, for your testimony.
My name is Rose Hubbard, and I have started an Anchorage Community Homelessness Project. I presented this proposal, and it's a continuing, growing proposal to Department of Health and Social Services, to HJND. And I am also putting together a questionnaire that I'm going to take down to people, Brother Francis Shelter, Third and Carlock, other homeless people, my dad, who has been chronically homeless for the last 50 years plus, has offered to help me get people together to actually interview, to give demographic information, what they need, what they want, what they can, they can't do. And in my proposal, I have given realistic issues to be addressed and also realistic solutions. It's still ongoing, it's not a final draft, it's just a proposal, and I would actually love to have anybody, everybody, look at it. It's, it's gonna take everybody's input to make it a reality. So I do have cards that have the Facebook page that I've developed, so anybody, everybody, please, I need your input.
Thank you, Ms. Burke, for your testimony. I encourage you to keep laying back to the hands commission.
My name is Ross Reno, and I own Business Downtown Anchorage, also over the First County Community Council, and have actually participated with the Radicals abating people out of their residents in the homeless community. I'm not here to say anything negative about what the study has done, what the 1.3 million has gone towards, or things like that, but what I would like to suggest is that, to follow what you were saying earlier about the actual statistics, are we looking at how many of these people are being denied services because they're unruly, because they're not able to follow the rules and regulations within the system that they have set up for, that they're so nice to set up for each one of these individuals? And is there some kind of statistics to find out how many of those people are sent back out on the street? Because I have a theory that the reason the community is seeing so much negative input with actual thefts, from people being assaulted, from different things going on, is because these are the people that are not complying with the homeless coalition and not complying with the rules and regulations that have been set up. So now they're left for the public to deal with these issues, and this is where I think the frustration lies with our public, is we're just sick and tired of it. And it's not, it's not to say you're not doing your job, it's just that I think that's something you really need to look at, is look at how many people are kicked out of the program, or how many people are being denied that service based on their actions, and are they the repeat offenders that are also doing the stuff that we're seeing in our, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burke, for your testimony.
Hi, my name is Barbara Hanson, I live in one of the highest impacted areas of Chester Creek. And Mr. Rivera, I know you walked with me through my neighborhood, and I really appreciate that. I'd like to ask if any of the rest of you have been in the Chester Creek area between Eagle Street and C Street, A Street, huge impacted neighborhood. I wish, I'm happy that you wake up every morning, enjoying your job, wanting to go there. I wish I could express to you what I wake up to in the morning. Every morning lately, I wake up to a greasy, nasty, white garbage smoke that hangs over my entire neighborhood and reeks of garbage. I wake up, look who's been in my backyard, I look and see if anybody's broken over my fence, stole my stuff. I come home from work and I do the same thing. At night, I go for a walk with my dog in the neighborhood, and I smell campfires through the woods again, and then the garbage fires start again. We are being impacted by your reticence to act. The whole conundrum of where do they go, where do we put them? It's easily solved, give them a place to be, give them a legal campground. You're tacitly giving them approval to camp in our neighborhoods, they're destroying our neighborhoods, and they don't need to be there. Yes, they need water and sewer, give that to them. Don't put it along the Chester Creek in my neighborhood, though, put it in a campground where they can legally be. There's been a proposal to create a campground in Central Park, where there's already water and sewer, you could put a fence up for their protection, the homeless people aren't trained to be in the woods, too. How do you think the neighbors feel, being in those safe neighborhoods? It's the most inexpensive proposition to create a legal camping area. All the things we talked about tonight, abating people's property, what do we do with their property, what do we do with this, what do we do about the fires, it's all about how do we manage these illegal camps in our ruins. And that's the thing, those camps are illegal and you're not doing your job. They shouldn't be there. And you need to do something about it. There's also a provision in the nuisance code that allows residents to sue homeowners who are allowing nuisances to go unabated, and the Muni is allowing these nuisances to go unabated within 300 feet of our homes.
Thank you, Ms. Burke.
Hello, my name is Hans Thompson, I'm a resident about six blocks west. I wanted to just maybe change the frame for a second. I think that, you know, what the feeling is for me, as almost daily walker on the Chester Creek Trail, is that things have gotten better from last year. And I know that's hard maybe to say from a political perspective, or from pushing for, you know, more stringent enforcement, but I think things are getting better, and I think it's because changes that are happening. I think it's because on the bureaucracy side and from the citizen's side, people maybe independently are doing what they can to try and solve this. I did want to say that one thing that I think was incredibly helpful was the grid base abatement this year, the Valley Moon area. People ask and say, what happens when you push people out of their camp? And I think that answered the question, they move west, and they move east, and they move everywhere. And what happens is that you have otherwise impacted neighbors now impacted. And what I feel is that, you know, when they moved west, and they moved closer to West High School, where the lawyers and the other judges live, they started acting on it, and that was the fastest camp, that was abated. And that will continue, as people continue to move through this. Now, while saying everything's good, there's also, you know, you can always have better government. And one thing that has always disappointed me again is the data, and I won't go further with it, but the idea is that what you have presented and what the administration has presented is an abstraction way for what could be provided in a table, that's what's wanted. And what I see this administration doing with other instances, say the MLP bill, is that they provide a legal reason why they can't release the data, why it has to be only certain numbers, and they release it through their normal kind of workflow, which is Charles Wolfworth, and who are, people are, who they work with. And what we want is, we want a table, that's what we want. And we can criticize that as we see it, but we'll be hopeful, happy to see it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Hi, my name is David Peltow, I live off of Campbell Creek, Greenbelt, just east of Lakotas. And today, my wife and I walked down towards the park at Lakotas, we counted seven brand new tents. Looks like the 1,600 bucks last week's going to good money, and being spent well. And it's clear to me that the majority of those folks, I've lived in this neighborhood for quite some time, they're not accepted at the shelter, because they're not interested, as someone else earlier spoke to, in following the rules. And this is where they can go hang out and not have to follow any rules. And we've been enabling that. Well, I'm willing, I'm willing to pay. We were asked earlier about, well, okay, what do you want to do, where do you want to get the money for this? I'm quite willing to pay a sales tax for public safety, for police, fire, and public safety. And public safety includes giving social, psychological support to citizens in need, as well as a place to sleep at night. And if we're not willing to step up and say, okay, if we think this is a problem, we have to be willing to pay to solve the problem. We can't just say, oh, you have to do it because we elected you. Well, we have to give you a tool, and in this modern society, the tool is money. And I'm somebody who's willing to pay. Thank you.
Thank you for tonight. My name is Donna Graham, and I'm a registered nurse, and I'm very concerned about the health of this community. And I'm very, very concerned about the behavioral health services we lack. And I think if we're gonna talk about what to do afterwards, it doesn't make any sense, let's talk about what we should do first. I really think, I'm with this last gentleman, please text me, I want to take care of my neighbors. I've been living with this faith community for 57 years, even though we're down where Tom's Square is now. This is a neighborhood in need, this is a city in need, this is a municipality that's hurting, and a lot of this because we don't give services to those people who really need them. Let's do this right, let's put some budget money for behavioral health. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vic A, just retired from the state of Alaska. You guys have done a really good job. Four of us from Anchorage just went to Europe to do a bicycle tour, so we were able to go through a lot of those parks that we're talking about here in Anchorage. I live on Chester Creek, I'm also a victim of having stuff stolen, actually have caught perpetrators, and they were all homeless. So I'd just like to add that there's a big difference between Alaska, well, not just Alaska, the United States and Europe. We didn't see any homeless camps anywhere in Europe. We went through Spain, France, Germany. We went through cities the size of Anchorage. Not a single homeless camp in any of these public spaces. So they hold people accountable in those countries, so they're doing something right. When I came back here in September, we're doing something right here, we're making progress, because I noticed right away, because I use Chester Creek every day to bicycle. And I noticed right away, there was a big difference from where I live to right about sewer highways. So we are making progress, and that's what we need to keep doing. Thank you.
My name is Leslie Thompson, and I'm actually from Juneau, and I'm up here for a meeting. And actually, Juneau has a worse problem than Anchorage does for capita. I don't know if you guys know that or not, but I'm downtown a lot, and we have a huge homeless problem downtown, where we get a million tourists a year. And I'm really conflicted, because I'm a follower of Jesus Christ, so I know we have to love our neighbor, but it's very difficult when you know many of those folks are on drugs or have knives and will hurt you if they need to or want to. And I also have friends who are, have been homeless, and they, many of them don't want to be there, but some of them are okay with that. But like the lady talked about, mental illness, many, many, many of those folks have mental illness. And the frustrating thing about that is, you can't see it. So you don't know what's going on in that person's head, they may not get to be able to have the drugs that they need, but I think putting more services, as they promised with Espinelli One, more services for drug and alcohol counseling, substance abuse counseling, and behavioral health, housing first works. I've seen it happen in Juneau, we're gonna add more places. So I just pray we've taken God out of just about everything, and I think that's the secret that could turn this state around, is God and the compassion that we need to make it better.
Hi. My name is Kell Wally, and I am resident of South Edition, and my neighbors are Stephanie and Russ, and I see them frequently dog walking, and I wanted to thank them for all the work they do. This statement they made that I read, I think it was on Nextdoor, is this is not homelessness, this is a criminal enterprise, and I cannot agree more. We have a layer of opioid addicts, we have a layer of homelessness, where they come into our neighborhoods every night, they go into yards, they go into sheds, they go into garages, if they can, cars, they break into homes. What, we all work, most people, we have a paper trail for possessions we have, and with this ACLU lawsuit and storing of their possessions, I'm just curious as to, how do you prove that you own a generator, solar panels, a chicken? I have a paper trail, I'm not so sure they do. And I'm really, really curious, and you've got this garbage, and you've got some really nice, a tin from Ariella, and I would just, yeah, I would be, I'm curious to how that works. That's it, thank you.
Good evening. Ron Belavo, I used to be the only public person attending these meetings. Thank you for joining. Thank you for joining. Got to be careful if you join me here. I'm being prosecuted. But first, I want to say I sat next to Mr. Rivera in this church, in this city church. And I protested being here as a politician, as I will today. This is God's house, where you get baptized, you get married, and you get buried. We don't want to listen to making God's house City Hall. I'm going to recommend that we go to the Legislative Conference Room over there on Minnesota and Benson. Then you can meet with your state legislature and get the overtones of religion out of this meeting. And I got charged with reckless endangerment, pollution of air, water, and land, and misuse of a pesticide, for allegedly, after cleaning up, putting on chlorine to disinfect the fecal material of the vomit, the needles, the bloods, the decaying food. And to my dismay, the fecal material is the worst, because I have a level four in wastewater treatment. It's the highest in the state. Requires a college degree and to pass the test. And when I see open sewage two hundred feet from kids' kitchen, it's time to disinfect. So I'd like you to add non-solar waste code of abatement, but also AWU to go in and disinfect. And sad to say, as I put my head down, I looked at my shoe, and I'm going to let Mr. Dunbar take a look at the tip of my shoe, because I contaminated this church going on my property next to the shelter and beans. And if any, Mr. Rivera, compared to the bean next to the shelter and beans. So Mr. Dunbar, being an attorney, I don't want you to taste it, but take a look. What's on the end of my toe? I apologize for bringing you in, I didn't see you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunbar.
My name is Stuart Andrew again, I'm from the Homeless Committee for the Candle Park Community Council. And I've been coming to these assembly meetings, committee meetings, on Wednesdays from eleven to twelve-thirty, every Wednesday that I'm in town, since you all started meeting. And I kept waiting for the issues that have to do with the landowners came about. And it didn't happen, and it didn't happen, and it didn't happen. And I heard about all the wonderful things the city was doing for the homeless in terms of building shelters, and taking care of medical needs, and health needs, and mental health needs. And I was always for that part of the issue. But I kept waiting for the other side of the issue, which was the fire behind my house that has, you know, been a real harm. And I want to thank Stephanie and Russ, because I didn't hear any of this come up until June, when they came to you all with the twelve-point plan. And it's now October, and it's taken this long to get all the way through all twelve of them. But I don't have anything to add to the twelve things you guys listed. Those are all the things that are going on in our neighborhoods. And I want to help those people that need help. And I think that there are a lot of really good things happening. But I think there's this other side that it's taken all these years to get to. And it took two private citizens to sit down and write all this up. And I want to thank you all for that. And I appreciate the fact that the Assembly Committee took him on and said, "Okay, we're going to deal with those twelve points." Because I started wondering in August, when they were going to get to them, when they kept saying, "It's going to be this week, it's going to be next week, it's going to be next month." So I'm glad we made it through all twelve of them, and I hope we keep working on it.
Apparently, everyone else is much taller than you. My name is Tasha Hotch, and I live in Mountain View. And I've come to a couple of the homeless committee meetings in the past. And I'd just like to thank you guys for the work that you guys have been putting in. I provided public comment before, and I felt like it was really challenging to say, like, "We're not meeting our capacity needs." And people took that as a personal attack on what they're trying to do. And what I'm saying is, we need to identify where we need to be putting our resources. Living in Mountain View, I have had some challenges when I lived in an apartment building. People were coming in, sleeping in on the stairs, in the laundry room. And that was scary. They were not aggressive homeless people, but they were homeless. And so I remind my neighbors, "They're not bad people, you can talk to them. Ask them, 'Hey, like, if you need someplace to stay, let us help you.'" And we've also gone, my family and I have gone into some of the parks and helped clean them up. And that's a scary thing to do. You see medicine bottles, you see needles, you see trash, you see fecal matter, other things that I wouldn't want to say on a microphone, but just trash that you wouldn't want to touch. And my son was helping do that from the time he was about eight years old. And it's very scary, like, "Oh, don't touch that, we're going to have someone else pick that up." We also take our pets through these parks. And they don't recognize those things as things that they shouldn't touch. So I really am in favor of us doing whatever we can to help maintain clean spaces in our public areas. Some of my friends are homeless, known as the working chlorine homeless. And some of the things they've told me about the shelters when they stay there are, "They're not clean, and they don't feel safe." Thank you.
I guess I'm a little taller than you. So here we go again. My name is Lily Ann Martin, and I am a member of ACT, and I am also a member of this church. I did want to make a brief comment on something that Ron said earlier, that this church was a place of worship. And in this, he is right. But churches are also places of service. They must reach out to the community. And this, having a forum like this, is a way of doing that. But also, part of the community are the poor and the homeless. We must reach out to them, too. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Corv, I never spoke before you before. I appreciate what everybody's trying to do. But you're not seeing that the homeless people out there in your parks are different types of homeless people. You're sitting here worried, and you're spending all your time, and you're getting ready, and getting involved, and they're out there hurting. They're having a good old time, they're coming, they're having a good time, and they cannot do that in a facility or in an apartment, despite they're out there. Then there's another group of people that are addicted to drugs. And they're going to take advantage of hiding amongst the other people that are out there hurting, and they're going to steal your stuff to supply their havoc. And then you know the other people who don't have an apartment to rent. They don't have a good job, or they have any job. And the apartments that they have to choose from are a thousand dollars or more, which is a whole bunch of paycheck. So there are different types of people in a homeless community, but you can, at some point, group them together to some extent. The other thing is, is Jesus was born in a manger, he was homeless. And he also went from door to door asking people to help him. He was a banger. So Jesus was a homeless banger. So remember that when you're fighting homelessness, that you're not fighting the homeless. Thank you.
Thank you. And you're going to be the last one to testify.
Good evening, my name is Anna Alava. I'm going to be married to Ron, so since we are a place of worship, please pray for me. I see the subject of religion was brought up to a point I agree with my parents. This may not be the best forum. I also am a member of ACT, and I do think there is an interface between faith and how we treat our, the least of us, how we treat each other, basically. But I'd like to thank, and I'd especially like to thank you, Mr. Constant, for your comments about moving this problem north. I have lived with him in this location down on Third Avenue and Inverge Street. I actually lived on First Ave for many, many years. I've watched the problem grow from about 2003, when we moved in, after nineteen ninety-nine, until we moved out. We moved into the Chester Creek area. And now, the problem is also spreading, not only from the north, it's spreading south. And so those of you who live in my neighborhood, I don't go down Chester Creek by myself anymore, I just don't do it. I'm afraid to. And also because, you know, I'm easily triggered because of this issue. And so, again, I'd like to thank you guys for coming, and I read the twelve-point thing, and I have kept up with this. This is my morning, noon, and night, because I wake up with this, I go to sleep with this, and something must be done. I think that we need a multiple disciplinary approach to the problem of homelessness. But we need to be clear about what's homelessness and what is criminal. And this thing about the propane tanks, the bicycles, thank you, because the chop shops, all that stuff, that is criminal activity that is going on in these so-called homeless camps, there's a lot of it. We need to be clear about this. We also need to provide more resources for mental health, for drug treatment, whatever it takes. And so, I'm not sure how that will happen, but it has to happen. We have to be honest. And again, it is, it is an issue that's close to my heart. I go to St. Anthony Catholic Church, we have people come in during the day for coffee. A lot of times, I'm scared to be alone with them. Anyway, thank you, all of you, for coming, and thank you for support. It's lonely out there, but together, we can figure something out. Thank you.
All right, with that, I want to thank everyone for attending. Thanks for my colleagues speaking with us. Thank you, Stephanie and Russ. Thank you to city staff, and especially thank you to Central Lutheran for hosting us.